Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our September 17th, 2019 Board of Commissioners Agenda Review. And this is going to be quite lengthy today, so we'll get as much as we can, done as we can, but let's try to move on as quickly as possible. So Craig, I'm going to pass on you. Go ahead and saddle up and let's go.
Yes, sir. Sounds good. We have call to order, invitation, pledge of allegiance, approval of minutes, and then adjustment to our agenda. We do have a couple of things we would like to walk on. You have a couple of budget amendments in front of you. One is for the debt project funding.
Here they come.
Here they come. It is basically what we, that is outside the contract of RCC for the tower, and we have to appropriate approximately $72,900 for. We went back and checked the contract. This was done when we originally looked at towers four years ago as well. So this is not-
Hold up a minute. This is 4H.
Okay, we'll get to that in a second.
I was looking hard.
I have a few things to pass out some more.
I'm sorry. I was supposed to pledge your heart to 4H, and you face give us a heart attack.
The 137 to 72,900, this is an additional to our contract with RCC. This will be with tower engineering professionals. There for the three towers sites that we're looking at, the engineering services is outside of the RCC contract. So we went back and checked to remember the hours before the engineering services were outside of the tower contract. So what we will do is add the 72,900 on to our debt financing. And Allison, did I explain that?
Yes, we'll be reimbursed from the debt proceeds when we do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I mean, I'll have an issue with it other than the fact that how could you possibly build the tower sites unless they were engineered? I mean, that hardly makes sense.
It is just-
Were they expecting us to hire an engineer?
Yes. And this was originally with RCC, this is how the project was done back in 2014 as well. So it was done separately.
But are they hiring the engineer?
This will be a county hire.
A county hire?
Yes, sir.
Are we going to have to put it out for bid?
We think we consult sources. This is professional services. Tower engineering professionals is who we've used in the past and who know our system and know our tower sites.
Okay.
It's about 23,000, 24,300 per site.
Do you want to place that under consent?
Yes, we'd like to place that under consent. Then you have Budget Number 134. It is grant funding for 4H, which is a underage tobacco use grant, which is a 100% grant funded, no county dollars. Then we have in front of you the construction bid for the corporate area expansion. These bids were open last Tuesday, and the low bid, alternate bid one, and additive bids number two and number four is 751,500. This has been reviewed by WK Dixon and also the Airport Commission, and they would like to recommend approval. And we're doing budget amendments today. We think to make sure that everything is covered with what we're doing.
Excuse me, didn't I understand that it's reimbursable to us?
There, some we have our budgeted fund balance for, which we have a budget amendment number 117, that we're moving some money that we budgeted in this year's budget. Some will be grant reimbursed.
Okay. Just wanted to make that point.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Place that in consent as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I might. We had anticipated this bid to come in in excess of $1 million, and this came in at 751, substantially lower. That included the alternatives of putting in a connection for the generator on this particular building, so that if power is out, we can in fact connect a portable generator to the electrical system. And the other option was actually a roll-up door in the back for vehicle access. But even with that, it came in at 751, and that's the reason we wanted to kind of walk this on, so we can get this process moving as rapidly as we can.
And this was, the bid opening was last Tuesday, and the Airport Commission reviewed it that Tuesday night, and it's recommending unanimously approval as well.
Right. Thank you.
Then next, we do have a request for a PowerTech fireworks display on October 31st, 2019. We wanted to make sure that that got on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
How much, I'm looking at the information here on the checkboard. How much is the county going to have to put for this?
This is covered under Budget Amendment 117 that we're doing today. So we've already set aside 500,000 in this year's budget, so from fund balance. So we believe at this point that everything is covered with all the different pots of funding that we have.
Okay.
Is that a fair statement, Allison?
As far as I know.
Yeah, as far as we know at this point, we believe everything's covered.
And if I might also respond to that, we're going to be using those federal grant dollars where we get 100, what is that called? The federal gives $150,000 a year, and we've got to use those funds or lose-
RPT.
So rather than building-
RB, I'm sorry.
You know, the original discussion was actually building a T hangar.
Right.
And they converted that over to actually building a corporate hangar. So they're using all of those funds as well.
But also with the fireworks, we'd like to put that under consent as well. And that is all the additions that I have, and apologize for so many walk-ons.
So do we need to put it back to reverse for consent for these other ones?
Yes, sir. If we put on a consent, yes. After that, there's special presentations. We do have our employee service pens. Number two is a ROCSC recognition. Basically, what this is, is a recognition of our EMS employees who have brought back our residents back to life. So this is a reservation, I forget the actual acronym, but it is-
You don't, you don't want to-
Well, you don't want to, but we are, it is really to honor our EMS employees for service above and beyond in saving lives. Then after that, we will introduce our new Veteran Services Director, Amy Smith. Amy was the assistant with Brenda, and she is taking over. We're excited about Amy and wanted to make sure everybody knew Amy and was aware of Amy. And then number four, motion to approve Senior Center Month proclamation and update on Senior Center activities, and Paula Edwards will be here. Then at 9:05, we'll have public comments. Then we'll have the Appointment Committee and, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if there's any.
Can you say talk?
Yes, we have one. I'm sorry, I was reading. Yes, we have one appointment today. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Then at 9:15, we-
Get up. I know we've always had the public comment at, on the agenda for 9:05. Is that, are we really being fired to the public for them to be here at 9:05 when we know we've got all this other stuff coming before it? Or just, if it ain't broke, don't fix it?
Well, you could probably take the timeframe off and just say, "Public comments just follows in order." Instead of letting them have an expectation that it will start at 9:05, is just leave it in order and then-
Was Mr. Parker, Mr. Neal's right? What would, what would you say? Just leave it like it is?
The reason it was given a special time was because people didn't want to have to sit up here for everything else. They just wanted to make their comments and leave. That was the reason that it was set early on.
And I think, I think we need to have a time, because a lot of people ask me, you know, what time is this going to take place? I think we need to have a time of some kind. Maybe what we need to do is look at the possibility of going by the agenda on the time. In other words, if we need to stop something before we get to that in order to start that, say, 9:15 or whatever.
Why don't we, why don't we just think about it and discuss it at another, at another meeting? We just, you know, kind of run it over, think about it.
Yes, sir.
Because we, we do need to cut it as short today as we can. Five minutes don't give you much time.
Then, the next on the agenda, which is scheduled at 9:15, which will probably be a little later, will be our public hearing, receive public comments on proposed amendment to the Wayne County Electronic Gaming Operations Ordinance. Do you want to just wait for the public hearing? We went over this at our last meeting.
Yeah.
Then we will recess the Board of Commissioners meeting and convey the Board of Adjustment meeting, and then we will have an additional public hearing to receive public comments on a special use permit request for Jose Rene Torres Arrendondo to construct a mobile home park at 1,035 Genoa Road, Dudley, North Carolina. And then we'll have that public hearing. Barry, do you want to, do you want Barry to go ahead and give an update now?
I'm good. I read the minutes.
Well, the show.
I can, I can be brief. This is a mobile home park, and the reason this is before you as a mobile home park, which you do not see, is because it is in the RA-20 zoning district. And of course, it being in that district does require special use before the Board of Adjustment. So that's why the board's seeing this one, excuse me, in particularly. But there are 13 lots. It is on Genoa Road. We have advertised for this. We've notified adjacent property owners. We posted a sign at the property and advertised in the paper for the public hearing. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that we have.
One quick, that does make a correction, information of a lesson. RA-20 is 20,000, a 20,000 square foot lot, is that-
That's right.
And then what he's, what he's actually going to have is a tad more than a 10,000.
That's right.
Our 10, I mean, so-
You're right.
I don't know whether I read it in it, so-
You're right.
Tim, give the public a little explanation about the difference between the two. That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, RA-20 does require 20,000 square foot lots. The mobile home park allows for, I guess, smaller lot sizes on overall track. So in this case, their, their average lot size is 11,125 square feet. And that's the reason why this is coming for you as a special use in the RA-20 district, is because they are asking for something different or special than what would typically be allowed in RA-20. So that's why it's opened up to a public hearing, because they're asking for more density, I guess you could say, than what would typically be allowed in that district.
But in, in reading the information, it sounds like, it's not like he's out there on island by himself, because there are other mobile home parks around that.
Yeah, there's quite a few mobile home developments, mobile home subdivisions around. I think this to the south, and I believe to the west, there are other mobile home developments.
That's the way the information read. And I, reading that, I felt comfortable, but I wanted for the public to hear the size.
Yeah, you see on the screen, there's a, you know, those are all single wides and double wides to the south of this site in that development.
That's fine.
Yep.
And you, have you heard anything about any of the property that's part of it?
I have not.
Okay. All right. I know it says on here, wetlands, no, but it's not in a flood plain of any kind?
It's not.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman, if I could inquire, are, could we, as the, acting as the Board of Adjustment, may take action on that?
Yes.
After the public hearings?
One follow-up that just popped in my head. Some months ago, I shared with you, and I know you all checked on it, there was a mobile home, a small mobile home-
Yes.
-locked down at someplace that there was complaint about the road.
Right.
Now, reading your information, it talks about the way that the road would have to be constructed unless it was done by DOT standards.
Right.
Is there something called retroactive that would cause this person in that particular mobile home park to improve that road?
There wouldn't, because that's an older one. But, but there were standards, are standards for those as well, the older mobile home parks. And in that case, we have been able to get the owner to improve that road. So that one actually has now been-
So it's, I'm, I'm guilty of not having been through there, but sometime when I find these things out, once I share them with you all, they, they, they lift, I get them out of that bucket and put something else in.
Right.
So I hadn't been back through there to check on it.
Yeah, but it's, but yeah, that one's been taken, but there are standards for those as well. But this one, the Mobile Home Park Ordinance, does have requirements for gravel, how deep it, how thick that gravel has to be, the maintenance and so forth. So, so with mobile home parks like this, we-
I have never had any-
We keep on that.
And I make it be cautious, I say this, I haven't had anyone to, to complain or anyone to be so efficient about, say, a driveway of mine that I deal with in my public, in my personal business. But as a matter of course, the tenants come in, they slam on brakes, they get dirt in their tread, and they back out and take the dirt with them. I mean, you know, when a mud hole comes, it can't, dirt just don't disappear. It's got to go somewhere. So every tenant comes in, it's wet, and it tosses some dirt out with them. But I tend to have to haul dirt myself to put in the road. So this, this person had to me, although he had been there a long time, he could have moved if he didn't like it. He was paying rent, so he had a legitimate reason to want to be able to get in it without having to go through, you know. Anyway, thanks, sir. Thank you for taking care of that.
I have a question.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming that the smaller lot size, he can only put single wide mobile homes on this lot size?
Right. Typically so. And also with the, with the way the septic will be done, they, double wides would probably not be possible out there, because they're going to probably use a smaller septic size for two-bedroom homes, which would be typical of single wides.
Yeah.
Double wides that might have three or four bedrooms would require a larger septic area and a larger lot size. So that's why typically, when you see mobile home parks like this, you typically only see single wides.
Okay.
Now, just to listen to you answering his question, you did use the word typically, so he could typically put a double wide in there if nobody-
There could, and you see that on occasion, but you could, if you got rid of, say, two of the spots and combined the two and put one double wide in, in the place of two single wides. So there's, you know, the potential there of that. You don't see that often, because you're going to get less rent, you know, so. But, but you can see that. It is a possibility in some cases.
Okay.
And I am. Thank you, Barry.
All right, thank you.
Then after the public hearing, we will adjourn the Board of Adjustment meeting and reconvene the Board of Commissioners. And then under unfinished business, unfinished business number one, motion to approve CDBG DR infrastructure budget changes. This is really at the request of the City of Goldsboro. This is to move money from their drainage project to the Herman Center project that will also serve as a backup site for a shelter.
What did you add?
Page 22.
Unfinished business.
Yes, sir.
I got you.
And also, we are readjusting some of our generator projects to, that will increase from 400,000 to 540,000. We'll have generators at, under the CDBD, CDBG DR project at WA Foster, Easton Wayne High School, Carver Cultural Community Center in Mount Olive, and the Spring Creek Middle in Seven Springs.
Mr. Manager, I probably might need to go back to about the fourth grade and get another reading lesson, but let me bring something to your all's attention, and I, because either I misunderstood it or there's a contradiction, I'll accept that I may have misread. In the last paragraph on page 22, the emergency generator project will also change. Originally, a generator was proposed for the old Herman Park Center, but now it will be refunded as part of the construction of the third gym. A generator is added to Spring Creek. Let me go on. Originally, a generator was proposed, originally, a generator was proposed as part of the Carver Cultural Center renovation project, Carver, but it is being added to the emergency generator project in order to combine the generators for existing facilities into one project. Now, from that right there, I got the impression that the generator was no longer going to be housed, put at the Carver site in Mount Olive.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It'll still be at Carver.
Well, I found some cleric when I went on down, and Carver was listed as one of the generator sites.
Yes, sir.
But what got my attention was that it said, originally, a generator was proposed, originally. And from there, I got the impression that that was an original idea, but something had changed. But you're assuring me that the generator that was proposed for Carver Cultural Center is still going to be there?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'll leave it at that, if that's what I'm assured of.
The big change is really just, the City of Golds, this is a request from the City of Goldsboro, they want to reallocate the funds that they had for the drainage project to the Herman Center, Herman Park project for a backup, or not a backup, but an emergency
Now, I'll leave it, I should just leave it there, but on page 23, when it said, improvement to the Carver Center Emergency Shelter, it listed the dollars, that was fine, but over in the explanation, it didn't give any. So my suspicious mind, gentlemen, when I didn't see an explanation over there, and then what I almost thought was a contradiction, Brother Brogdon, this is one of those south of the Noose River things. I know it sounds like that, but, and it is that. But I just want to make sure, Mr. Manager, that number one, that the proposed things that we had heard about the Carver Cultural Center, and no, sir, I don't monitor them minute by minute, but that caught my attention, that it either a contradiction in my mind, or there was contradiction on these two pages.
Right.
So I'm assured that it's not.
Since there was no change with really with Carver, that's the reason why there was no change in the explanation, because really nothing changed.
All right. Thank you all.
I know it's getting wordy, and I apologize, but my concern is, the improvements to the Carver Center Emergency Shelter was for a generator. The current budget was 539, proposed budget's 539. However, the generators for four emergency shelters is 400,000. So, and I'm sorry, and that was increased to 540. My question is, the improvements to the Carver Center Emergency Shelter did not change?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That, the dollar amount did not change. There's more that they are doing to Carver than just the generator.
Well, the generators included evidently in the four emergency generator shelters, which is-
That's what it's called, it's a B and B, it's one package. The engineering services required for those generators will be inclusive of all four.
So we're just using these funds and actually to buy the generators at the four shelters?
Right.
Correct?
Right.
Okay.
Well, when I saw what I thought was an increase in dollars, and maybe I'm not sure Joe was going on, but that one argument that I was going to delve into, if there was an increase, if there was, Mr. Editor, if there was an increase in dollars, there wasn't going to be a contention. So, but I had, but I, but in my side of my mind, if I, there were other things that were discussed months and years ago about what would be inclusive in, not just the generator, but other, I figured some carts and some other things that would be appropriate for an emergency center.
The biggest changes really are moved, that is really at the request of the City of Goldsboro, is moving that drainage fund project to Herman Park, but also the Seven Springs Fire Department. You know, that was part of this grant, and we're moving that also to Herman Park as well, since Golden Leaf paid for Seven Springs.
I was close. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was close on this. I was, it looked like that, at first glance, it looked like too much, there was a lot of stuff being moved north.
Nothing's been left south. We're not, not taking it from the south.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Then next, we have consent agenda, application for elderly and disabled exclusion. They have all been reviewed by staff and reviewed for approval. Application for present use value, that's been recommended by our tax administrator, Alan Lufkin, and recommended for approval. And then we will get to budget amendments.
We do have several of these, so I'll try to get through them as quickly as possible. But if you have questions, please feel free to stop me. They start on page 41. The first budget amendment is for EMS to reappropriate unexpended funds at June 30 into the new fiscal year, so that we can complete those projects. For the Health Department requesting to realign the budget for hospitalization, this was a budget amendment that was done previously. You'll see a voided budget amendment behind it, and it was taken out of the wrong program, so they are correcting. so they are correcting that. For Wayne Net, requesting to anticipate and appropriate twenty-nine hundred, thirty-nine dollars and seventy-one cent in insurance proceeds. Social Services, they are requesting to reappropriate thirty thousand dollars in non-capital computer equipment, and I won't go into all the details, but she does have several justifications behind that in her memo, behind the budget amendment. There were several items that needed to be carried forward into the new year. For the Health Department, they are requesting to realign the budget for the Child Health For Finance, they're requesting to transfer the technician position that was originally approved in the Sheriff's Office budget to the Finance Office. For Fleet Management... Sure.
This position, is, is this individual also responsible for other work than just the payroll in the Sheriff's Office?
Yes, sir, that's our intention. It, it will probably be sort of concentrated on that until we get everything set up, and then we plan to give them other duties, finance-related.
Will this individual be transferred actually into the fourth floor up here?
Yes, sir.
Or is it go, so they will?
The fourth floor, yes, sir.
Thank you.
For Fleet Management, requesting to anticipate and appropriate five thousand dollars, um, this is basically to separate out third-party payments such as towing expenses, um, things like that, that Fleet might have to contract out with another company to do. But they would bill the department for that.
You lost me somewhere.
I'm sorry, that was page fifty-four.
Okay, I got it, I got it.
Okay. So, on page fifty-six, with Facilities, they're requesting to move twenty-nine thousand, six hundred, thirty-nine dollars from repairs and maintenance to capital outlay. Uh, this is for the upgrades to the elevator in the Jeffries Building. It was budgeted, but it was just budgeted in a repairs and maintenance line item, and it should be in capital. So we're just moving that from one line item to another.
Mr. Chairman, whoever on that, somebody needs to look at these elevators over here. They want some strange stuff this morning.
Did what?
Did some strange stuff when I came up on this one. Carol said the same thing.
Okay, on page fifty-eight, Workers' Compensation, we are requesting to reallocate eighteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Uh, we do have this adjustment every year. Um, we provide them with an estimate of our salaries for the year for our workers' comp, but when they receive our true salaries for the end of the year, they adjust that to actual. So that premium adjusts based on whatever our salaries end up being for the end of the year. Does that make sense?
Were we that much over budget in regards to our salaries?
Well, there were, I mean, there were several additional, you know, whether it be that we had more vacancies, because they go off an estimate based on the information that we have at the time. So we could have had vacancies built into that number, um, that they had not accounted for, and maybe those vacancies were filled. We probably had some adjustments. Um, anytime you do merits and colas or hire a new position, all of those things factor into this.
And overtime.
Overtime, um...
Including in the total sum for workers' comp.
So anytime our salaries increase, for whatever reason, that, that will affect this number as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. For the Sheriff's Office, requesting to anticipate and appropriate sixteen hundred, thirty-two dollars and three cent in controlled substance monies. For the Health Department, um, adjusting the line item for, um, the Minority Diabetes Prevention Program by twenty-eight hundred, forty-seven dollars. For the Sheriff's Office, requesting to reappropriate eighty thousand dollars from the prior-year budget to the current year. Um, this is for the Axon car cameras and body cameras. This invoice was not billed to us before the year-end like it should have been, so we're having to carry that forward into the new year to pay it. For the Library, they're requesting to, um, reappropriate twenty-three hundred, forty dollars and four cent in scholarship monies. This is to send one of their staff members to the Library Association Conference. For the Staff Attorney, there are two, along with the budget, along with the memo that he provided. Um, these are additional funds that need to be budgeted for the various, um, sales that he has listed in collection of surplus funds. So I'm on page seventy-one. For Sewer and Water, we're requesting to reappropriate, uh, the stream debris monies, and this includes, uh, disaster recovery funds and Golden Leaf monies. We're appropriating those from June thirty into the new year. Yes, sir.
Does, uh, does this indicate that the work has been finished or is in... I'm sorry, I didn't focus on this earlier, but...
That's okay. They're...
Continued clean?
Yes, sir.
So we're in, this is in the process?
It's ongoing, that's right. We're going to have bills this year, so, yes, sir. For the Wages Program, this is pass-through money for Meals on Wheels, but, um, they did have, um, I think it's a reappropriation, or maybe it's just a new grant, but these are pass-through funds from the federal and state in the amount of three hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred twelve dollars, and as I said before, this goes straight to the Meals on Wheels program. For Hospitalization, we're requesting to reallocate twenty-five thousand dollars from hospital claims to the HSA payment. These are additional employees who have elected to use the HSA option rather than the PPO option for our insurance. For the Jet Port, uh, we have a appropriation, um, in the amount of forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and a reallocation of fifty thou- fifty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, this is federal block granting, grant funding for the design and bidding of a storage hangar.
Uh, what is...
Yes, sir.
Be appropriate for the person on our board that serves on the jet port to tell us a little bit about that if he would like to?
Really, throw me right under the bus here.
No, no, not intended, but...
Well, as I'm understanding this, these are the dollars that we've been getting in from, or some dollars that we're getting in from the federal.
Yes, sir, and as I'm looking at this, this was actually, um, approved in the original budget, but they're reallocating it to a specific revenue and expenditure line item for tracking purposes. So this was more just for identification purposes on the financial statements.
And the reason that I bring that up a little bit is, we, we, we do have two airports in Wayne County, and it's always good to hear a little bit of explanation when dollars are moved around or, or dollars are spent, so that the public in general will know where these dollars are coming from, and they're not, uh, you know, just so they'll know where they're coming from. I'll leave it at that.
Well, let, let me clarify that, so I don't look like an absolute idiot this morning. Uh, there's about four million dollars' worth of improvements going on at our jet port, and th- those funds are coming from every nook and cranny that we can find, from federal grants, uh, Golden Leaf, uh, NCDOT, um, and from all of that, there is a matching funds that are required by the county. So you will find somewhere in the neighborhood of, I'm going to say a half a million dollars approximately, would be the county's matching funds. So NCDOT comes along and says, "We'll give you three billion dollars for, as a grant," but they require a ten percent match, and that's three hundred thousand right there that the county would have to invest in that project as well. So all of the numbers are supposed to work, but I know it's close.
We have the MP funds, we've got the property sale, there, there's multiple...
And you've got the Crawford reimbursement dollars that have come in, that we're using those. We're trying to use every dollar that we can and not hit fund balance as much as possible.
And, 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 and just a little bit of tag along on that, because we do have to. Is it fair to say that if the Mount Olive, uh, Airport aggressively, not that they, they do, but seek out all these nook and crannies for funding, would our board be in line to match?
No. No. That, that has to be Mount Olive, because it's Mount Olive's airport.
Well...
But we do get that we have budgeted thirty-seven thousand dollars a year annually for the past four or five years, uh, that we give them as kind of a, uh, supplement.
Yes, sir, and that, and that is appreciated, but just to talk about apples and apples, thirty-seven thousand dollars does not compare to a half a million dollars. Only if it's, and I'm not suggesting anything above and beyond our sliding scale to benefit anyone inappropriately. That was just a question for ears who may be listening, that if it was an appropriate, appropriate is the word, opportunity, an appropriate opportunity, I would not want to miss, I would not want someone to miss an appropriate opportunity if it was apples and apples. That, that's all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't think we're looking at apples and apples. I mean, because this report up here, the Wayne's Executive Jet Port belongs to the county, the one in Mount Olive belongs to Mount Olive. I mean, they've got the same opportunity to go after the grants, not that we do. I mean, I'm not saying that, you know, we, we, I'm not saying that we can't justify two airports, but, but we, but, you know, this is, this is, this is not apples and apples.
Well, as a county board, we do have something called Industrial Park down there that we have a dog in that fight, don't we, Mr. Manager?
We do.
I, I'll leave it at that.
Beginning on page seventy-nine, there are several budget amendments that all pertain to the airport, and Mr. Daughtry gave a good segue to cover, um, the various revenues that are, you'll see in these budget amendments. These are all reappropriations, so these are all the monies that Mr. Daughtry was referring to, that we've secured, that were on our books at June thirty, that are being brought forward for these various projects. So that covers all the way through page eighty-five.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Question, question, seven dollars and forty-four cents, that's the end of the Eastern Region amendment?
Yes, sir.
Afraid that's it.
Your check is blown.
Afraid that's it.
Your check is gone.
No, no Happy Meal, no nothing.
We got our last, our dimes out of us, for sure.
Seven dollars, I told you, we're using every dollar we can.
So, um, if you all are good with those, we'll start back on page eighty-six for the sewer. Uh, this is also a reappropriation for the Genoa Sewer Lift Station, and these are Golden Leaf funds. Page eighty-eight for the EMS Building, we are requesting to reappropriate thirty-six hundred dollars in unexpended funds at June thirty, and this is to pay out the Granton Rescue Lease. For Facilities, requesting to reappropriate one hundred forty thousand, four hundred sixty-four dollars. These are, um, additional monies that were needed to complete the, uh, probation and parole buildings and repairs to the Jeffries Building Elevator. So those are finishing up some projects that were on the books at year-end.
Have preparation program moved in there yet?
Not yet.
We're close.
Oh, that's going to, uh, this is September, the proposal wins this month.
Okay, good. They're, they're starting, uh, they're, the state is working on their IT, uh, piece right now. They said that that would take about thirty days.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, hell, the state IT.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Uh, but, but we are finished. I think there's some minor punchless things that we're doing, but we are basically finished, um, uh, at this point, and we're still working on, uh, the old Board of Elections building is going well.
Okay, so on page ninety-two, this covers multiple departments, but these, um, are adjustments in salaries, and we're reallocating funds to cover those adjustments in salaries. Um, I did do something a little bit different this time. Instead of using fund balance appropriated, I did ask Craig about using, um, an offset to sort of our contra-account lapsed salaries. So to give you the quick and dirty about this, fund balance is really only to be used for one-time items. Salaries are not, they are recurring expenditures. So what I've asked Craig if I could do instead is offset to our contra-account that we have that lapsed salaries, which is sort of the savings that we anticipate, and if we have to go against anything, we would go against that account and reduce the savings that we are expecting to offset those salary increases. That allows us to track it better on our side. So for Social Services, we are asking to reallocate seventy-seven hundred dollars from salary and wages to overtime. Uh, they have a memo behind that. There's a couple of reasons for this. They are still trying to work within that, um, memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the state, where they do have certain standards they have to meet, um, and then they did have some additional overtime, um, related to the hurricane, and at this time, it does not look like we will receive reimbursement, but we're making sure we've got all that accounted for in case we can get reimbursement for it. For the Sheriff's Office, they're requesting to reallocate twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars. This is their CS property funds, and they are using this to purchase a vehicle for the drug unit. That vehicle is a replacement, by the way, not just a new one. Um, it did have high mileage and major mechanical issues, and the old vehicle will be sold on Gov. Deals. And then you had two walk-on budget amendments, and, um, Mr. Honeycutt already went over those, but if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer any you may have.
Have you been storing these up or something?
It's like going on vacation. You pay for it before and after, so we missed a meeting, we got to pay for it.
Okay.
So, questions? We've got number four, uh, motion to approve the acquisition of property, approximately fifty-three acres, located at nine-twelve Mount Carmel Church Road, Pikeville, for potential future development at the Wayne County Executive Jet Port and accompanying, uh, budget amendment. Uh, if there's any questions, I'll ask.
Just a quick comment. This has, this property has been in negotiating for years. This is at the end of the runway, and it is one hundred percent, uh, grant from NCDOT for the acquisition. So our reimbursement on this is assured once the budget passes.
Once the budget's passed.
I suppose. Once it passes. It will pass one day.
Uh, number five is motion to approve the sale of surplus property on Gov. Deals as requested by the purchasing manager. Questions on that? Number six, motion to establish a public hearing on October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, at nine-thirty AM, in the Commissioner's Meeting Room, to receive public comments of request to rezone a two-acre tract of land north of five-four-one-three North US one-seventeen Highway, uh, identified as tax parcel three-six-zero-four-two-one-eight-two-three-two from Residential Agriculture RA twenty to Community Shop- Shopping in Pikeville Township as recommended by the Planning Department. If you have any questions, Barry is here. Okay? Uh, number seven, motion to establish a public hearing on October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, at nine-thirty AM, in the Commissioner's Meeting Room, to receive public comments on a request to rezone twenty-nine point oh-five acres near the intersection of Ruskin Road and Sleepy Creek Road, identified as tax parcel, you can read those, from Residential Agriculture twenty to Heavy Industrial in Brogdon Township as recommended by the Planning Department. Question? Number eight, motion to establish a Board of Adjustment Public Hearing on October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, at or after nine-thirty AM, in the Commissioner's Meeting Room, for a special use permit for a ramped solar energy facility. Number nine, motion to establish a Board of Adjustment Public Hearing on October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, at or after nine-thirty AM, in the Commissioner's Meeting Room, for a special use permit for wage solar energy facility. Number ten, motion to establish a public hearing on October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, at nine-thirty AM, in the Commissioner's Meeting Room, to receive public comments on a request to rezone five point nine-three acres of land on Mitchell Farm Road, identified as the tax parcels from Community Shopping to Residential Agriculture in Fort Township as recommended by the Planning Department. Number eleven, motion to adopt Resolution twenty nineteen, twenty-six, resolution adopting the Twenty-Ninth Amendment to the Position, Classification, and Pay Plan for the Wayne, uh, for Wayne County, North Carolina. If there's any questions on that. Um, again, part of that is... Again, part of that is, especially with EMS, it's not the creating of a position, it is defining the position when we have our new EMS directors. Number twelve, motion to approve the petition for a road addition for Pickens Drive and Wimbush Court for Mears Bluff Phase Two to the state maintenance system as requested by the North Carolina Department of Transportation and MAPS. Any questions? Hey, Woo? Yeah, the other two is the, we'll say thirteen is the fireworks request for October thirty-first, and with the number fourteen will be the construction bid for corporate air expansion approval. Any questions? Under New Business, presentation of launch entrepreneur development strategic plan by Craig Foote of Wayne Community College, and Craig will be here, you have that presentation also in your agenda packet. Number two, Hurricane Doran recap by Emergency Management Coordinator Aaron Streicher. Number three, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners video. Four, catch a glimpse, video by Public Affairs, County Managers' Comments, Board of Commissioners' Comments, and Committee Reports, closed session, and then we will adjourn.
Motion, we break until nine o'clock a.m.
So move.
All the people, please, raise right hands. Nine o'clock.